I guess we can start the meeting, I suppose. If he just joins, he joins. We're already five minutes after, so I will call, call the meeting or into order at seven oh five. First order of business is working on the budget, but uh. Thank you, Jamie, for being here. You're gonna tell us a little bit about the Lake Lilinona Authority. I probably need to get in more involved in this process, obviously.
Yeah.
You know, it's something that the town is involved with and and because all of us had a lot of questions on that. And we understand things went up and all that. It was just, I was just hoping to get a little bit more of an understanding of what the authority does and all our part.
Absolutely. Yeah, so you know, Lake Lilinona Authority is the, I guess, Roxbury, Bridgewater, Newtown, Southbury, and New Milford. That all have interest in the lake, you know, all their towns are, you know, basically have frontage on the lake or own a portion of the lake. I actually did a quick sort of a quick measurement of the acreage in Roxbury. There's about thirty acres of the lake in Roxbury, which is, you know, small compared to the rest of the towns. And we do pay half of what the, you know, New Milford, Southbury, the rest of the towns pay. We do pay half. But, you know, the things that we are working on, you know, our big thing is the Marine Patrol. And obviously with COVID and everything, you know, we had to kind of boost up our patrol in the last few years. You know, and those are all badge officers that we have to have. A lot of them come from Brookfield. They come from a few different departments, but you know, they kind of keep the lake safe. You know, I know a lot of Roxbury residents probably don't use it, but it is a beautiful lake. It does get a lot of use. Uh, you know, I know Patrick's a big water or jet skier. I've seen him out there. And, you know, it is the second biggest lake in Connecticut and.
I apologize for the waves, Jamie, while you're fishing. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, you know, our big thing is Marine Patrol. We had to, you know, boost that up. We did put in some infrastructure. If you go over the one thirty-three bridge, um, you can see our new docks. We used to have them up in a marina in New Milford, the Marine Patrol, but it kind of got into a weird situation. So the town of Brookfield allowed us to use some town property and we installed the whole Marine Patrol kind of command center really with our boats. You know, we have three boats. We have, you know, all of our equipment and everything we keep there. We have our gas, you know, that was one big thing was fuel prices that we were paying through the marina. So we, you know, invested and we bought gas tanks and so now we have Mitchell deliver gas to us. Basically, you know, we pay for the gas. Another big thing, you know, I mean, the Marine Patrol is definitely the biggest thing and it's definitely necessary, you know, as someone who is on the lake quite a lot, it does get crazy during the summertime, you know, and it's, it's heavily used.
And so the COVID just brought everybody out, right?
Oh, it was unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah.
Unbelievable, you know. I mean, it is a beautiful lake, you know, as I used to, you know, before I had a boat and everything, I was kind of like, ah, it's Lake Lilinona, whatever, but you know, once I should get on it and, you know, traverse it and travel along it, it is, it is a really nice, nice lake and you know, once you get into the main body of the lake where there's a pog and the Who's a Tonic Arms meet, it's actually all protected on both sides by state forests. So, you know, the Pogus, the Pogus State Forest is on the Newtown side and there's George Waldo and Aldo Louyepold on the Southbury side and it's just, you know, you basically feel like you're in the middle of nowhere. It's just all forested. So, yeah, it's definitely.
And compared to Candlewood, it's night and day compared to the volume of people. Like, it's just, just absolutely pristine.
Yeah, it is. It is. I mean, it is an impoundment. So you do have the issues with the wat raising and the wat, you know, lowering of the water levels. First Light controls that. You know, one thing, it, that is a fact, the lake is a business. You know, First Light controls the Chapag Dam and it's the reason the lake is there is to create electricity. So there is that, but I mean, it definitely has great public benefit to, you know, all the towns that surround it. Another big thing that we've really started to really focus on is some invasive removals. We don't use any aquatic herbicides. You know, back, I guess, even before I was on the Authority, they did some chemical treatments of milfoil, Eurasian milfoil. Kind of straight away from that because we kind of realized the milfoil was kind of did what it did and it kind of took control of the whole lake and, you know, just kind of, you have to live with it. But now our, our focus is on two different invasives that have taken hold in the Who's a Tonic Arm. They have, they're not, you know, Roxbury is a Chapag Arm, but the Who's a Tonic Arm, there's both curly leaf pond weed and water chestnut, which are invasive and we've actually, we've, we spent pretty much, you know, all of our invasive budget on those two things and we remove them mechanically every year because if those get out of control, you know, the lake is, you know, the whole lake would, would change for the worse. So that's where we're really focusing our efforts is on those two invasives.
What is the curly, what?
Curly leaf pond weed is one and water chestnut is the other. They're both up, way up in the New Milford Bridgewater side of the lake on the Who's a Tonic Arm. A lot of them come down from the Still River, actually. The Still River from, comes down from Danbury. And a lot of those, if that's kind of their source is from the Still River and we're kind of trying to nip them right there before they come down, which we've, which we've done to this point, you know, we do have invasive First Light also, you know, works with us a bunch and they do have their invasive monitoring programs. And they, you know, give us a report every few years on what's going on in the lake as far as invasive species. So, you know, that's, you know, as far as taxpayers' dollars and invasive species, we've decided milfoil, you know, it's just is what it is and it's kind of overspread the lake, which is done every lake. And we really kind of focus on the curly leaf pond weed and the water chestnut.
Is that basically what's hitting that whole big area in Roxbury side of it?
That's milfoil.
Arm, that's all milfoil?
Yeah, that's all milfoil. So, you know, another thing that's been introduced into the lake is zebra mussels, which are, you know, I mean, it isn't invasive, but at the same time, it's increased the water clarity. So it's, you know, the lake's a lot clearer now than it used to be because of the, you know, the, the zebra mussels are filter, they're filter feeders. So the lake's a lot clearer now. So what that allows is more sunlight to get to the bottom. And there's a zone between like three and eight feet where the water or where the milfoil grows up and a lot of, not all of the Roxbury section, but you know, right around the boat launch and whatnot is in that perfect three to eight foot zone where the milfoil really has the perfect amount of light and it can do its thing and can grow. But that's, you know, there's ban, you know, you go around anything three to eight feet in that lake, go around the whole thing, the whole fifteen hundred acres of that lake. Depending on the year, depending on the, you know, amount of rain we have, but on the typical clear year that you're gonna have milfoil in those sections and it's just war mogs like that, candlewoods like that. Every lake is like that. I mean, you could get rid of it, then you'd have to pretty much just, you know, use aquatic herbicides and just, you know, do the whole thing and that also poses a whole different set of risks with nitrogen loading and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So that's.
Do that, so it was.
Yeah, we don't do any aquatic herbicide, any, no, no more herbicides. It's all, it's all mechanical and that's expensive, you know, you work with Matt Vought of New England Aquatic Services. He's out of Sherman. And he does all our removals, you know, he's got the suction and and like I said, it's all curly pond weed and water chestnut that we're focusing on now.
So the increase in the budget has to do with the patrols and the gas?
Patrols, yeah, patrols, gas, as well as, you know, the infrastructure we put in. And, you know, at, at the Brooks, on the Brookfield, you know, that was a pretty, pretty big expense we had to incur. It's all runoff solar. You know, it was too expensive was for us to run power down there. So it's all runoff solar, but it runs all our pumps. It runs everything. That's where we house our boats. You know, boats are expensive. Inflation, gas prices, you know, we do burn a lot of gas. Patrolman costs, you know, we had a couple of years ago, a big thing where basically, you know, patrol officers were, it was hard for them to show up because, you know, for them, it was they'd rather, you know, work on a road job swinging a stop sign because they were getting paid more than they were on the boat, so. You know, we had to up their salaries slightly or their, you know, hourly rates, hourly wage slightly. But the big thing is patrol use of the lake. I mean, twenty twenty was absolutely insane. So. Yeah, that's the, that's the reason from the, you know, to the nineteen thousand. That's the reason for the budget increase.
Well, I will say, I always see, I always see the officers out there. I always wave. I always slow down typically.
Yeah.
I understand.
They are good, you know, I mean, it does, it does. You know, for someone like me, it's, I mean, obviously from where I live and whatnot and what I like to do, I'm out there quite often and definitely have a presence out there and they definitely, you know, it could get, it could turn into a zoo. It's not like Candlewood, thankfully, but, but you get a nice summer day and, and the lake is hopping, so.
You can hear it from the house from.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it's a so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what we do and that's the main reason for the increases, you know, increase in control, especially the last couple of years. Boats, obviously, you know, the acronym for boat. They're not cheap, you know. New motors, we're trying to, to keep those to a minimum. We do, one of our, one of our boats needs a new motor, but we're trying to kind of limp it along and trying to stay reasonable with our budget, but, you know, boats and everything's expensive and nothing's, nothing's going down, so.
So is the, the increase to make up for money's already spent as well as looking ahead or how?
A little bit of both, but yeah, pretty much looking ahead for the most part.
Okay. And so.
I think there's some capital, as I remember reading in the narrative, some more capital expense for future boats and things like that.
Yeah, so you're putting. Future boats, future motors.
Okay.
You know, we are trying to get an AAS grant, which is the so every boat registration, now the Connecticut passed a law, we have to pay a certain amount, I think it's, don't quote me on this, but I think it's ten dollars every registration. You have to pay extra. You can see in your boat registration fee to the AIS, which is aquatic invasive species. And it's a state grant and we, we applied last year. We didn't get it this year. We're, we are hoping we get it for, you know, to, to target the removal of both the water chestnut and the curly leaf pond weed. So you know, we're trying different things to, to bring our costs down. But, you know, same time, we don't want to let the lake get out of control, so.
Yeah.
Of course.
Russ isn't here, so I just want to make sure the question's asked too. So you see the increase, this particular increase will stabilize at least maybe for the next year that you don't see it as.
It should stabilize for the next year, you know, absolutely. We'll have to do it.
Okay.
Fuel prices do. We do burn a lot of fuel, but it should, it should, it should, it should, it should be stabilized. You know, it was a fairly sizable jump from previous, but it should stabilize, I would say, for a few years at least.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And you know, I already asked when the lake is going down so we can do improvements on our side of it.
Yeah, and we do, you know, there's the Friends of the Lake, which has done a lot of and like I said, it is an impoundment and you do get the influx, you know, during floods and stuff of debris. The Friends of the Lake and different organizations have done massive, massive volunteer efforts to clean it up. So there's really not the debris that there was. And, you know, First Light has a massive harvester that they harvest debris with, so I mean, the lake itself has really, really improved over the last ten, fifteen years as far as debris and everything is concerned. I mean, the water clarity, I mean, we do have, we do have zebra mussels now, but, you know, it is, it is nice when you can jump into a lake in the middle of the summer and actually see your feet. Because they really have, they, they're filter feeders and they really have cleared it out. I mean, the lake is, the lake is actually pretty clear, especially the Chapag Arm, which Roxbury is in.
Of course.
So.
It's a phobia about a bridge coming at me down the river.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But, yeah, so that's, you know, you know, if you have any other questions.
Now, Patrick, do you see us doing some work on that ramp?
I would like to. So Jamie's answer to the question was, they don't drain it until fall. But we have some pretty good repairs to that boat launch and then I would actually go to the Authority, you know, if we were to put some kind of dock or something. I mean, it's just such a beautiful access that is a resource in this town that I would love.
Yeah, and I think a lot of people don't really, yeah, I think a lot of people don't really know about. It's a great for, I mean, obviously there is motorboats, but for paddle, for paddlers, you know, canoeers and kayakers, I mean, it's a gorgeous, gorgeous lake and a lot of people that I see down there are honestly people with canoes and kayaks that are going out in the morning for a nice morning paddle. It's great exercise and it's really, you know, you hit it right and it's, it's really pristine for Connecticut and it's, it's you know, there's, it's a lot, it's not very developed just because of all that, that land is conserved and
Yeah, preserved.
You know, thank God it's not a Candlewood situation where there's not a house every two hundred feet with the dock off of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I used to, I used to fish a lot on Candlewood and I, I told myself I would never go there again, especially on a weekend because you know, my eighteen foot, my eighteen foot boat could barely handle the weight, so.
Yeah, you take your life in advance, it's just not.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I would agree. Well, I appreciate you coming here to just talk about it and hopefully explain a little things a little bit better for us and for anybody that will watch this after the fact that might have any questions, I appreciate it. It, it also in, in your meetings are the first Tuesday of every month, which is the same as our Board of Selectmen, so I'm gonna have to probably use you as that resource if you need anything from that side or to keep the Board of Selectmen in communication. I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. So this is a special meeting, correct? I, I saw.
This, this is, this is the budget meeting. So literally, we were going through the lines and obviously, you know, twenty-six point nine percent is a, is a pretty big increase, so we just wanted have you be able to speak to it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, you know, I mean, obviously, if you have any more questions, let me know. I know Shannon's very involved. He's a great, great chairman. But obviously, you know, with working with six, I guess it's Roxbury.
It is six towns. It's Bridgewater, Brookfield, New Milford, Newtown, Roxbury, Southbury.
Yes, so six different towns. Obviously, every town's kind of having the same questions, so, you know, Shannon kind of delegated to each member was on the commit, you know, on the.
Yeah, that's hard, makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. Sit through six, six of these, so.
Yeah, no.
But, yeah, any questions you have, you know, obviously, Patrick, just, just let me know and.
Of course.
I'll be the same if the Authority has anything.
And thank you for what you're doing there.
Yeah, of course. All right. All righty, well, I'll let you guys continue your meeting.
All righty.
Great, thanks.
See ya.
Okay, so Julie, if you could throw the budget up.
That was very helpful.
It was nice, honestly, yeah, and I, I do love that water area. I mean, it's just, it's just gorgeous. I would love to see a dock there, honestly.
Yeah, it would be great just to, well, it would be nice to be able to get a bow easier, in and out a little easier.
I agree, I agree. Not that I want a lot of people there.
I know, I know.
No one's there, but it's so underutilized. It's just, it's just a waste when there's so much beauty in it.
Yep, no, we've used it, yep.
Okay. Um, excuse me for a minute, which part do you want me to throw up? I have it in eight pieces.
Well, you know, let's start with page one of three. This is the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget.
I have the entire thing in eighty-two pages and then I have revenue workshop, chart project, the chart.
No, this was.
I've got one page of the projected revenue. The capital.
Nope, not capital. Hang on, let me see if I can get it.
So Julie, it's Kim. You're gonna want to put up the draft of the proposed budget. Is that what you were?
That's what I'm looking for.
Should be draft proposed budget. It should be the first attachment. I'm sending it to you now. There you go. Hey, there we go, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so rolling up actually all of, I believe, everything on this page based on our last conversation stayed the same.
Correct.
Yep, there were no changes on any other line.
Yep.
Next page down, again, no, no changes, the same peaks in advertising. Senior Center programs like Lilinona are still our high points there.
And I'm fine with the Lake Lilinona, now that it's been explained.
So, yeah, yeah, it makes sense. And I mean, and when you actually see, and I should have probably, I could have mentioned this then, they put a two thousand two hundred and eighteen man hours into this. Patrol had contacted four hundred and, three hundred and forty vessel contacts, one infraction, a hundred and nineteen verbals, five written warnings, eighty inspections, fifty-four requests to vacate, a hundred and fourteen documented boater assists, numerous re-emoval, eight and five medical calls, like the, it goes on and on. There, there's, there's definitely some merit to that.
Yep, when you have that much traffic, it's, you need that more, much more help, so.
Yep. Okay, so on to Highway and Public Works. As requested, we have added that tree maintenance line so that it's still a thirty-three percent reduction, but we're following the fifty percent, so we've just increased that.
Okay.
Scrolling down, all the other things stayed the same. Police ships stayed the same.
Okay.
Trinity at fifty-seven. Insurance bonds, still twenty-seven point nine five, correct?
So anything to do with employment, we'll talk in executive session?
Correct. And then transfer, transfer station stays the same. Next page, the only thing that we changed on that next page is the land acquisition fund was removed or requested.
Yep, I think that was a good idea, yeah.
Yep, so now we're still down. So now, yeah, we can scroll all the way down so we can see all the yellow, Julie.
Okay.
Yeah, so operating budget is up nine point nine three. Capital improvement plan, that's actually, and, and that has changed as well, so we'll take a look at that after this. Region twelve went down and then our overall, so our overall is still forty-two thousand net difference, that negative to last year's budget.
Yeah, it was five five and now it's or minus point five five and now it's minus.
Yep, exactly, point three seven. All right, and now the capital budget plan, if you could, Julie. Nope. This is a long, big page.
That's the, the horizontal, the one, yeah. With the green bars.
Let me get onto this and see which one it is. It should be chart capital plan, I believe, or draft capital plan. Let me look. Draft capital plan. All right, can I just do this?
Got it coming?
Think I can. Can you see that?
Julie's got it.
Okay, I had it too. Okay, good. Okay.
You can make it a little bigger.
That'll work. Okay, so again, rebound stays the same. Town Hall Software's just pushing that out a little bit. Hodge Library already have theirs, Board of Finance. On this page, we have the increase to has this tree removal, you'll see fifty thousand dollars down, twenty-five thousand dollars in mow equipment stayed the same. But now we've added a hundred thousand dollars for the smooth drum compactor roller. Because apparently it's not called a steam roller.
Oh.
So that, they laughed at me for that down at the Public Works Garage.
Okay.
I'm learning. So that's seventy-five thousand for a roller and twenty-five thousand for a twenty-two ton trailer that we need to take care of that. Okay, if you could scroll down, Julie, protection all stays the same. That's still based on the request of Fire Department and ambulance. Public Works, we're still at fifty thousand, Town Hall, we're still at ten. All the same things stay the same, the repave, Memorial Library, Senior Center, all stays the same. Five thousand dollars for containers and maintenance for the transfer station and minor bridge ends up at eight seventy-one, eight forty-six now. And that, that's just with the adjustments that were given. Okay, do you have any questions, Kim, at all?
No, I don't.
All I did was all the adjustments that were proposed.
Yep, no, it's very clear.
Okay.
So we, I have a question, I actually do. So the, the drum compactor, how did that? That didn't make a big dent, did it?
It really didn't.
That's amazing.
I mean, it increased that net, but it's still, when you look at it from an overall budget, it didn't affect it that much.
I think this is a good year to buy it, you know, because that change in the region twelve. So I, I think this is definitely a good year to do that.
Correct.
Taking advantage of it, yeah.
The other, the the difference, and we can go into executive session for the next part of that. What basically paid for that was a reduction, reduction in the raise and no additional employee with Public Works and no land acquisition fund. So those were the things that reduced our overall that, that was kind of the trade-off to get the steam roller and take those other things away.
Yep. Good.
Okay. Okay, unless you have any other questions, you want to go into executive session?
Yeah, I think that's good. I'm good.
Okay, Kim, I'm gonna ask you to pull up the, unless you just want to leave it up. Julie, can you find the revenue projection one?
Does that look familiar?
That's the one I need. Thank you.
Can you make it bigger?
I can.
I mean, I can also pull it up on my own screen and then.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, um.
Can you, can you get the side search away? There you go. Uh. I, I, yeah, I would pull it just so we could see the. Do you have it on your, on your uh sheet of that, Kim, also, or no? Can we pull it down to like?
You should be able to toggle it.
Okay, um.
That's seventy-two and then it jumps to a hundred.
That would work, that would work, I think seventy-two, can you read that, okay, Kim?
Uh, no.
Sorry. But I don't know, I figure, this screen is half the ball here.
Exactly, I've got a tiny little laptop, thirteen inch, so I can, I also pull it up on my own screen if that's best.
I just made you call, you want to try and take over the toggling of the bottom of it while I'm gone?
Oh, Patrick?
Yeah, both of you were.
Oh.
I, I'd pull up my own, that's okay, it's okay.
All right, so I need a motion before I go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
A second.
On favor.
Okay, and you're going to discuss personnel issues, correct?
Oh, yes, we're gonna discuss personnel issues.
Okay, um, I've got it seven thirty-six PM. And you want Kim to stay here with you?
Uh, not necessary.
No.
All right, so I don't know, okay. Kim is gone, otherwise I was gonna put her in the waiting room, um, I'm turning off the recording. All right, let me get this. I'm gonna have to pause the share for a minute.
Go ahead.
Stop the share for a second in order for me to. Get the recording off, it was hiding under some, again, there we go.
Okay. Do we need to make a statement about being out of executive, executive session?
Do.
Okay.
Um, what time you made a motion to come out of executive session?
Uh, seven fifty.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, and Patrick, you seconded, okay. And then, um, was anything resolved? Uh, there was. You don't have to go into detail, just that if anything was resolved and you're.
All questions were answered.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then you're all set.
Okay, the next uh, the next step is to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented. Uh, or actually, I believe you should probably.
Never. Okay, I make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I will second that.
David. Hi.
Okay. So, okay.
That's it, all right?
That's it, you want to adjourn?
Like to make a motion to adjourn? I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Hi.
There you go.
Okay, great job.
Thank you, so now the next step is uh tomorrow, this uh whole packet will be presented uh to the Board of Finance. Um, our next uh Board of Finance meeting, I think we're gonna have one scheduled on April sixth.
Yes.
Um, possibly on the twelfth. Uh, and then before their regular meeting on the nineteenth. Before they go to their public hearing on the twenty-fifth.
So there's a Board of Finance on, on next week on the sixth?
On the sixth.
Special meeting.
Okay.
Then on the twelfth.
Oh, all right, there we go.
We have a backup date of Board of Finance um on the fourteenth if they need it.
Okay.
Their regular meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Public meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Oh, all right, okay. On Monday. Public. Will that be in person or will that be?
Uh, I don't know, Board of Finance is still uh going by Zoom at this point, um, I think uh. The uh Housing Plan Steering Committee is gonna be the first full hybrid.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Excited.
Pizza.
It was gonna be zoning, but they canceled it.
I know, yeah.
Um, when I asked me about this meeting earlier about Board of Finance. Adding in, I believe, sorry, that's my timer, my dinner's ready. Um, he, he plans on, a bunch of them plan on coming to Town Hall next week, so. I'm gonna get with Jimmy on that on the sixth, so.
Okay.
That will.
I know how to use all that anyway, so it's not gonna be.
Yeah, okay.
Bad if, I know how to use it all.
All right, that's good.
Thank you very much.
If nothing else. Have a wonderful night, go have your dinner, Julie, thank you.
Good night.
Have a wonderful night. Job well done, we did this.
Patrick, you and Kim, it was awesome.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.